To call. I'd like to call the meeting of the Palm Springs Public Library Board of Trustees to orders. Time is five thirty-one and Ginny, would you please do roll call?
Yes, Ed McBride.
Present.
Craig Borba.
Present.
Juanita Garner.
Here.
David Norgard.
Present.
Al Jones.
Here.
Everybody's here.
Ginny, would you please review the acceptance of the agenda?
The agenda was posted on or before January twenty. And then you all have to decide if you like the order of the agenda and all of the content.
Excuse me.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Ed McBride.
Yes.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Your agenda is.
Thank you. Before we get started on the public comments, as Ginny pointed out when we first started, we are on a new software. It's kind of a webinar. Most of the city agencies are using this. So it works a little differently from the Zoom that we were using before. And I also like to remind everyone, please, when you'd like to speak, this is for all of my my fellow trustees. If you would click your hand and let the chair recognize you so that we can keep up with the minutes and the comments that are coming out. I'll recognize those that wish to make comments. And I think, is there anything else that we need to formalize, Ginny? I think that was. That was primarily.
For nobody, we have no one and no one watching but for recording. Just so people will know, we are in a webinar format. If you are attending, if you do choose to attend a live meeting. You, your video would not be on the screen and you would not be able to speak, but you could raise your hand and then we could allow you to speak. So it's not out of the question. It's just that this is the the technology, the way it's set up.
So that's why it's really important that if anyone wants to speak, you'll just raise your hand and I'll recognize you so they don't overlook anyone. And we'll be sure to record all comments. Yes, Chair recognizes Trustee Jones.
Yes, I I guess I missed that. Can you explain to me what? This format is, so we're not on Zoom anymore. Is that what you're telling me? We're in a different. I I'm just curious. I I ran an airport commission for three years and we had no trouble letting people. We just controlled who could talk or not talk, that I could see.
You, you actually may have been on this software then and didn't realize it. This, I was recently at the Measure J and they use this new. I call it new because it's new to me, webinar form of Zoom, because it really is also has some added security so that someone can't bomb us. And jump into the meeting and disrupt the meeting. Ginny is the, is actually the, she is the chair position, so she sees everything. Unlike I don't. So if someone wants to, and it looks like Lisa is also the co-host, so. They're watching if anybody from the public were to pop in and raise their hand and want to make a comment. They would let me know and I would recognize them. So it's just a, it's just a layer of security that we've added. Because the other departments are now using this to for safety and security.
Oh, they are too. Yeah, I didn't like the way Measure J actually used it, quite frankly, simply because we couldn't see who all was there. Can you see then, do people, if if somebody from the public is dialing in? Can you see them, Ginny? Or can, but we can't see them. Is that it correct?
I'm not sure what you can see as a panelist. A participants icon that I have at the bottom of my screen. You have that also to see the names of the participants and the attendees. But. You, this is, it is still Zoom, but it's an, it's got an, it's a, an advanced.
Okay, I can see now. I can view the full attendee list. Got it. All right, okay.
Great. So that's good. So yeah, you can see the attendees and the panelists. So there are two tabs. And the attendees cannot see who else in attendance. So that is one disadvantage. I noticed that too when I was at the Measure J meeting. But attendees can raise their hand and they can chat. And so we can see that. And so there is that.
Okay, all right.
And so, and as an example, I was running the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. A few months ago and we got Zoom bombed and it was very offensive and. We had edited out of the, of the recording. It was so offensive. We, we don't, we don't need those kind of disruptions in a government meeting.
Okay, so let's get started. We're on item number three, public comments. Are there any public comments or anyone wishing to make a comment before the board?
There is not.
Item number four is our consent agenda. May I have a motion to accept the consent? And may I have a second? Roll call, please. Thank you.
Yeah. Ed McBride.
Yes.
Craig Borba.
Yes.
Juanita Garner.
Yes.
David Norgard.
Yes.
Al Jones.
Yes.
Consent is accepted.
Thank you. Item number, excuse me, five, our administrative reports. First off would be the Friends. Do we have a representative to make the Friends report?
Nancy is not here, but Julie, do you want to? Provide some comment about the Friends?
I, I guess the biggest thing is that looking forward to Modernism Week, the Friends have three events. And Modernism has come out with COVID guidelines that they just sent out to everyone that participated this week. And then we are all attending a Zoom meeting on Monday to go over those guidelines and to talk about anything that we need to discuss. The Friends' house tour was sold out as of this week. And then they have the dishware exhibit that will be at the Wellwood. And the Alan Hess lecture that will be here at the library. And then they added another event with authors of the mid-century modern. Architecture of William F. Cody. Those three authors are going to come and be here at the library and do a book signing. Here at the library on Saturday, the February nineteenth in the morning at ten thirty. And so that'll be great to have all three of those authors here, one of them being his, one of his daughters. And then we are talking with Modernism about adding an author book signing at the Wellwood. There is an author from Los Angeles that is giving a talk about one of the dishware designers that we're featuring in our. Exhibit. And so they approached us about hosting a book signing with her. And so we are in final talks about that. So I should have that nailed down pretty soon. So really, the Friends are very involved in Modernism this year, and that's kind of what they're focusing on right now. And kind of, that's kind of what's been going on with them for the most part. They've, they've been having really good book sales. All of the grab bags that they've had here sold out, the mystery bags. And they've been doing really great sales online. And in fact, they're kind of beating some of the previous year's sales. So they're very pleased with what they're doing with that and how that's been going. So I think that's kind of everything with the Friends. Craig?
Yeah, did they discuss their investment opportunities?
They decided to postpone that discussion until you were back. Nancy really wanted to have you there. And so they did want to discuss that with you back in town. The one other thing that did happen was they did have one of their board members resign, just for personal. You know, balance reasons, just trying to balance his commitments. And so they are interviewing for another board member as well.
Thank you.
Is that it, Julie?
I believe so.
All right. Any questions for Julie for on behalf of the Friends? Thank you, Julie. Next up is our Library Foundation and President David Siddy. David?
Hello. My report is a little shorter this week or this month. We are in the middle of our, our strategic planning sessions with library strategies. And I'm very excited about the direction we are headed. And I'm excited that the new board members on, on the foundation board are hearing what library strategies has to say. And looking at our, our original plan going forward. And our next session is February eleventh. Very excited about it. And that's about, that was, that was the last meeting between the last time we saw each other. So that's all I have to report.
Are there any questions? Chair recognizes Trustee Borba.
Uh, David, what was the final result of your mailings that you did in December?
Little under fourteen thousand and the goal was fifteen thousand. So we, we, we're a little shy, but.
That's still good.
That's still good.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the foundation? Thank you, David. Appreciate the, the report. Look forward to hearing more about the strategic plan.
I'm excited. Thanks a lot.
Make you an attendee now?
Don't make any faces. We can see you.
Okay, one moment.
Thank you. He's still there? Oh, he's gone. And so the Chair recognizes our Library Director, Ms. Case. Ms. Case, what's going on with the library?
Hello, the library. That's right, the library has been closed since January tenth. We, the whole city. Our facilities for COVID safety reasons and it's been a time. So we are split up right now into two teams. So that if one of us got exposed, we wouldn't expose the entire staff. So we're broke, we've broken up into two, two working groups. And then do some at-home work as well. We're doing the library agogo service at the door. So our pickup is, pickup appointments are very popular. We're seeing around one hundred people a day for pickup appointments. Very busy. If you don't know what you want, we can help you with that. We can help select items for you. You can either give us a call and speak to a librarian, or you can go on our website, PSLibrary.org. And click out, clip, fill out our Ask a Librarian form. And we get requests from time to time, people looking for items. They, they don't really know exactly what they want. Or they have an interest in a certain topic and then our librarians will pull selections for them. And it works out really well. We have been doing passport appointments too, and they are very popular. And just as an aside. I'm hearing that passport processing times is not official, but it's getting faster. I'm hearing that in, on social media and whatnot. We do have craft kits available for pickup. February, we love. A lot of, we love to promote Valentine's Day and Black History Month, so we've got some craft kits. And. Just before, I'm going to turn it over to Julie to talk about some of our events. But I wanted to just let you know, we don't really know when we're going to reopen. But the city is watching the COVID numbers very closely. And we were, we were, we were hopeful that we were going to reopen soon, but we were waiting for the COVID report to. We, we were waiting for the COVID report to come out on Monday and it came out and the numbers were terrible. So the numbers didn't go down, they doubled. And so we are still closed to indoor service. And we're, we're closed to indoor service at a lot of our facilities, too. Our community centers are closed. Although we're doing some outdoor programming, the pool has, the pool closed and now it's reopened. So we want to keep the pool open, but we're, we're doing our best to try to. Stay safe and keep our community safe too and, but still serve the community. So I want to. Some of our events that we've got going on.
Hi, okay, so I just briefly want to talk about a couple of events that we did in January before I head right into February. So we did have a great author event with local author and ecologist Jim Cornet. So it was one of our higher attended events on Zoom. We had forty-three sign-ons, but I know many of those were double people. And so that was exciting to get that many people in attendance about Joshua trees. And kind of their future and effects of climate change on that. So that was a very popular topic. So for February, we are planning to continue to have the majority of our events on Zoom. I do have two author lectures scheduled coming in February. On the sixteenth of February, we're going to have author Ruffi Marlena. And she's going to be talking about her current book that's just coming out. A day before, two days before she speaks here on Zoom. And it's called The Gave Blues. And then we, for Black History Month, we're having author Dwayne Ratcliffe. And he's, he has a book called Dancing. Goodness, Dancing to the Lyrics, excuse me. And we're excited to have him at the end of the month. On February twenty-eighth, which is a Monday. So in between there, we will have a few other events we, right now. Because Modernism is going forward, as is, we're keeping the Modernism events that were scheduled here as scheduled. And we'll just, we will continue and determine as we go forward. But one of the ones that we are hosting here is Home Movie Day, which is pretty fun. We hosted it for the very first time in Palm Springs and the Coachella Valley a couple of years ago at Wellwood. And this year, we had planned to have it at the main library on Saturday, February nineteenth. Where you could bring in any film that you might have in your attic in a, you know, storage container or something. Any of those old home movies. And there will be several different film archivists and restoration people that are coming in from LA. And they're bringing all these original equipment and they will review your film, tell you what kind of condition it is. Maybe even make some repairs and then they'll screen your film at least for a few moments to see. And so it's really a fun, engaging time and we're super excited to have them here with us. It'll be on, as I said, on Saturday, the nineteenth, from one to four PM as currently scheduled. And then, like I said, we're hosting some of the other Modernism events. So, you know, we're, we're watching it going forward. As Ginny mentioned, we are having craft kits. All the different age groups are having one. The adults are going to do an origami heart shaped bookmark. And so that will be fun. And then the teens are doing art inspired by Alma Woodsey Thomas. And, and then the kids are going to be making tissue paper art collages. So lots of different things and different times to pick up. And of course, it's always while supplies last, but we encourage people to make an appointment and come in and get a kit if we're not open. And of course, if we are open, they can come in during library hours while we have them. So, and then we continue on with our book clubs and our regularly scheduled programs that we've been doing on a monthly basis. The memoir club and our workshop and the book clubs and so on. So any questions or anything I can answer for anyone?
The Mr. Ratcliffe came to speak to the Rotary Club and it was very interesting, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I, we all enjoyed him very much, so I think it'd be a good, good program. I recommend it.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along to the Treasurers' report. Chair recognizes our Treasurer, Al Jones.
Yes, thank you very much. I may start coughing. I have a slight respiratory issue. I, by the way, I have been testing negative for COVID even as of yesterday. So I want you to know that. But my, I'm still getting laryngitis as it goes through. This is my third meeting today. Anyway, the report that you have in front of you was run on January twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. Again, nothing out of the ordinary. I didn't really have a lengthy conversation at all with Ginny because there was nothing out of the ordinary on this. The balance has gone from one point eight six five to one point eight six two, which is a reasonable. Given the expenditures for the month. And that's really all there is. There's not a whole lot to report. It's good. It stayed the same. And then the Finance Investment Ad Hoc Committee, that's on item D later on in the report where Craig and I had a conversation and met. So I'll report on that at that point. Or both of them, actually.
That's a question, the donation that we accepted at the last meeting hasn't shown up yet. Is that correct?
I, Ginny, I don't know that it has, has it?
The check arrived and I sent it to finance. I mean, it just arrived.
Right.
You know, this week, so.
That was the.
And we're waiting for the, for them to record it in your funds.
Right, I did not find it. And there was, the amount was fifteen hundred dollars. So yet has, I could not find it either.
No, the, the fifteen hundred dollars was a check we got in December.
Oh, you're right.
This one is twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry. Yes, that was for the other in the estate. Sorry, yeah, you're right.
But I have a, I have a comment if that's okay.
Yes, Chair recognizes Ginny.
Okay, so I, you know, we talked about getting the balance to match. The unallocated funds and allocated funds to match. So I put in my request, but the Finance Department denied my request. So I, they said, once a year, we'll straighten out the allocations. So once a year, we'll do this. So I just. To balance the account. So you'll see that on. Her packet, page fifteen, where it says all library expenditure accounts and it has library trust funds in a spread. So I added a line that's called to be allocated. And then when the, when we do our new fiscal year, we'll get the, we'll allocate the proper amount in the future library projects account. And. Straighten it out. And then once, so you're, the money is yours. It's in your account. It just doesn't have an assigned budget item. Budget line for it. Does that make sense?
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Are there any questions about that? And so I assume you, you'll, you'll keep track of that until we get all back to where it's supposed to be. Is that, is that the plan?
Yeah, when we do our new budget, we'll make sure that the amount allocated is, is accurate. Not just a carryover.
Yes, because at the new year, we have to, the, the Finance Committee then looks at the projects that that need to go away. And that money needs to be put back into the trust fund if there are any, correct? That's part of the process of reconciliation.
Yeah, and speaking of the budget process, it's probably time for us to start. Getting our budget, annual budget ad hoc committee together to, to think about what we want to propose for next year.
So do we, do we have anyone who would like to volunteer this year to be on the budget ad hoc committee? Would you please raise your hand? Or do you want me to appoint somebody?
I suppose as Treasurer, I should be on it.
It needs to be a volunteering basis.
Right. I'm volunteering before I'm drafted.
So Trustee, Trustee Jones will be representing us. Anyone else?
Ed, you're not going to, I thought, Ed, you're automatically on that.
Um, in the past, the, the Chair has been on it or not been on it, I think, right, Ginny? I mean, I haven't been on it every year.
You can, you can volunteer. Yeah, you don't have to be on it because not, then that would make it a standing committee and then.
For consistency, Ed, maybe you should be on. I'm volunteering you.
Okay, so I don't, I don't mind. I, I'd be happy to. It'll be. As you guys know, I, my, my term is up at the end of June. I'm gone. So this will be my last hurrah, I guess, right?
Yep, your last hurrah.
All right. So Ginny, the ad hoc committee will consist of Trustee Jones and Trustee McBride. I assume you'll call a meeting of the group at some point very soon. Or you want me to, or you want?
No, yeah, I can, I can work to schedule a meeting. It's, it's not an emergency, but now's the time to start thinking about it.
When is it? When is it due?
Well, the city manager said that they're going to start doing budget meetings in April and May.
So we should have it in by April, I expect. Okay.
Yeah, February, March. It's, now's the time.
It'll be here before we know it. Yes, Chair recognizes Trustee Borba.
Yeah, I'm willing to be an alternate if there's an issue.
All right, I'm documenting.
I had thought. Do, do we need to have a motion to accept the Treasurer's report?
Yes, you do.
So may I have a motion to accept the Treasurer's report?
I'll move.
Do I have a second, please?
A second?
Roll call, please, Ginny.
Ed McBride?
Yeah.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Juanita Garner?
Yes.
David Norgard?
Yes.
Al Jones?
Yes.
Okay, Treasurer's report is accepted.
Excuse me. Thank you. We're now moving on to section seven A, which is an update on the Measure J Community Grant Application. Invitation to present to Library Priorities to Measure J Commission. So I attended the Measure J Community Priorities Evaluation Committee. Along with Ginny, so both of us were there. I was, I made it, and I'm sorry, Al, you were there as well. Thank you.
Yes.
And I made a public comment at the beginning of the meeting asking for their support of our application. As you guys recall, our application was to fund, along with, to fund the remodel of an existing store. Bring into a public meeting maker space. And that's a partnership that we submitted along with the Friends and the Foundation. So I, I made a public comment, just basically asking for their support. I will tell you that the, I, I had a heads up, literally. We were, we were waiting. I was, I, you couldn't see me to the commission. And I was in the wings and they were having a little chit chat. That's why I want us to be very careful about what we say because people could be listening. And one of the commissioners expressed confusion about the priorities of the library and where we are. And why we haven't been before Measure J to share those priorities. So I knew kind of going in there that there was going to be some questions away from our application. About our overall priorities, just so you all know. So, of course, when you make public testimony, you can engage with anyone. So I made my public testimony and I stayed to the bitter end along with Ginny. And I think, Al, you stayed to the bitter end as well. And sure enough, when our application came up, there, there was some lively discussion. We're very fortunate that several of the Measure J Board, they know us. They've served on some of our own committees, as you guys may recall. Juanita, we, we had. Trust, I'm sorry, Commissioner Soto, she was on the build and you may recall. So, and Linda Feuter is a former trustee. So we're lucky that we've got people that are aware of the library and our history. So that's very, we're very fortunate, I think. So the, the conversation. They, they talked about our, our application and they moved on to, we really need to hear from the library. And then Chair Jeffrey Bernstein said, I really would like to invite the library to come and present. What are their priorities over the coming years so that we can start identifying the resources that Measure J needs to put in place? For their projects. And they moved on. There really was, and, and I think they were, they were evaluating all of their applications. They were scoring them, but there have been no decisions because they, they have to pick it up and not done yet in terms of our application. So I really don't have an answer on, you know, what our application looked like and how it scored because they, they weren't sharing that. They were just kind of discussing the applications. And they had a lot of applications. And they had already eliminated, what was it, Ginny? Do you remember like thirty or forty, some number that is, that they had eliminated? From the very beginning because they didn't apply to the criteria for the grant. So that tells, there was a lot of demand. I also learned that instead of a million dollars, which is what I thought they had, they have two million dollars. So they have a little more money to spend, which is good, I hope. So let's, let's see what, what happens on that front. So I received an official invitation right now this morning from Measure J. Asking us to present our priorities at their February meeting. So Ginny and I have, have had a chance to, to put our heads together on that. I, I told them that I would talk with her, make sure that her calendar is clear for that time. And then we will start working on, we have fifteen minutes to present at that meeting. And cram all the stuff. um cram all the stuff that, you know, I know I personally have been involved in and many people have been involved in for many years into a fifteen minute presentation. So um and at that, I I will tell you, um I I assume, Jeannie, that trustees can come in as listeners, a member of the public, I mean, right?
Anybody can.
We need, you know, you're you're welcome to um to to show your support and and join that meeting and listen to the conversation. But it's um it it's kind of my intent and and I, please forgive me, Jean, because you haven't said yes or no to this, but I'm thinking that it's the presentation that we've done several times. We even got approved at one point and the money was like evaporated um by City Council. So it's really going back to uh there was some money one time that was allocated to us that we were asked to spend. We we made the the justification for it. It was approved and it was it was ready to expand and COVID hit. So it will start there with, where's our money? Um, not so much that way, but you got the idea. So it's like, where where's that money? Because that money, um, for those of you who weren't with us, was uh earmarked to extend library strategies who had helped us all up to that point to organize. They were going to extend their contract and start working on the building program. And then there was some money in there that we were going to use to start working for the remodel of the JC building. So there there was two projects that we had kind of folded into that six hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I I I think that that's where we need to start is is where would that is that money? And and I want to get with Jeannie to make sure that we still want that money for that reason. Uh, Chair recognizes Jeannie.
Thank you. I wanted to just respond to you too. Yeah. Yes, I think, like you said, we've done this presentation many times. We, I know, I know this program. So we we did it together for the seventeenth. My calendar's fine for that.
Is that the date again, the seventeenth of February?
Yeah, the seventeenth, five thirty. Now, you don't have to watch it live. Um, you can watch the recording on YouTube later. So if you have other obligations or don't be watching a commission meeting, it is recorded. So you can, you can always go do that. But um, the answer is yes, we can, we can get that together. And um, I think it would be great to be able to explain our goals and what that, yes, we're ready. We have that same, the same vision that they do for the money and we're we're ready to take it and and move up with that.
I think it's important for us to not spend a lot of time on history, but I I think that a lot of, we have forgotten that we spent money and time to have a community meeting where we had a lot of members of the public attend and have input into a strategic plan that um identified a lot of what was then folded in and approved for funding in the future with Measure J. So you know, I think it's that has to be a footnote in our presentation that everything we've done so far has had a lot of of public input. Then you talk about the actual location of the main library. We went through months. Some of us were on that committee, Juanita. Um, and you know, we went through a lot of work to and listened to a lot of public comments. Lot of uh what was put into that so that, you know, some of this work has been done. We're now ready to move to the next step. And and so hopefully, we'll get their endorsement on it. Um, but yeah, that's kind of where we are with Measure J. I I have to tell you that I'm I'm not Jeannie's, for the first time in in six years, Jeannie is the more optimistic one in this than I am, which is so unusual, because normally I'm the optimistic one, and she's telling me to like cool my jets. But um, you know, I maybe it's fatigue because we've been through this so many times. I'm just being perfectly transparent. But I'm going to get excited and I'm going to, I'm going to pull out my pom poms and we're going to do a great presentation and remind everyone that motherhood apple pie in libraries are critical to everything. And so we're, you know, we really do need their support. And I've had, by the way, um, I've had a couple of people reach out to me and say, it's time to spend money on the library. When are we going to do this? And they have personally, as citizens, gone to the mayor, gone to City Council, gone to the city manager and have 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 let it be known that it's just time. Uh, we we keep keep getting pushed back and we uh it's unfair. So I'll stop there. Chair recognizes Trustee Barbara.
Yeah, I have uh two questions. Um, I've never been to a Measure J meeting. So is there an agenda? So would you have a set time that you would speak, Ed, so that we could tune in?
Yes, um, as soon as we get the agenda, I'll ask for the agenda and we'll share with all of you. So you'll know what time.
Great.
It's much like our agenda, Craig. So you'll have an idea about when I will appear in the agenda. I will tell you that uh Chair uh Bernstein said that they are, they really want to move because they want to get on to those applications. So I have a feeling that we're going to be in the front and we're, they're going to get through us so they can get back to their deliberations. Your second question.
Second question, uh, Jeannie, it's for you. What is the status of the JC building? Have we had an architectural uh do some preliminary plans for that? Or have we spent any money on it? Or are we just still talking about fixing it?
So um we did, the latest thing that we had done was a walkthrough with our city's Public Works Engineering Department. And because the project is pretty basic as far as structural needs, they feel like they could just use one of their in-house architects to do the project. So they don't, uh, on call, I mean, on-call architects that the city has already a contract with. So um, we we did a walkthrough and and pointed to different things and um, so there was a a rough plan, but nothing's been put into blueprint form.
So Greg, that six hundred thousand dollars I was talking about, there was some money in there to begin the planning for that. So
Okay.
That's why we want that money, uh, because it included the city services to do the architectural plan um and get the process started.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, I'm assuming, Jeannie, that the idea of a bookstore is still in the plans for there? And then meeting rooms, so to take pressure off of the library?
Right. Um, our plan was to, we envisioned to put our archive in one area, have a a workroom space, and then have the main room probably dedicated to the Friends Bookstore. I mean, I I that's what I see. Um, and even if we did the Friends Bookstore in a mobile shelving format, we could roll all that out and then have another space for something if we needed to.
Yeah, that'll be great if we can get there. That'll be great. All right. Good luck on that one, Ed.
Thank you. Is that all your questions? Did we answer your questions?
Yes, let me take off my hand.
Thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Trustee Jones.
Right, uh, just as kind of a an additional bit of information, Jeffrey and I were going back and forth um when I let him know that I was liaison from this committee. Uh, and on January sixth, he sent me an an email back and forth. We're talking about the library. But he said the commission has been very enthusiastic about the library project. The main issue to date is that we are not sure what the plans are. Um, and I've had conversations with Jeffrey. And he said previously, there were funds set aside for the future project, but COVID did rail a lot. And he said he is hoping to develop with the city a new five-year Measure J plan, and it should certainly include the library. So two bits of information, I I Ed, you know this as well, but uh we need to be as concise as possible about what the plans are. Uh, and just, you know, really, one, two, three, four, without any ambiguity at all. Um, and then understanding that he's he's going to try to develop a five-year Measure J plan that he believes should include the library. Um, anyway, I I just thought that would might might be useful information to have.
Well, the 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 part of the memory here is that six hundred thousand dollars was money from long ago that was ours to use and uh we we just never used it. So it really isn't part of that five-year plan. That's going to be probably the biggest battle, Jeannie, I'm going to have to convince them, is that was money that was left over from the first wave of Measure J from a long time ago. Now, we might, that might be a ghost that's just gone, but we're going to fight that one first. And then if you look at the documentation, if you go back to even the first meeting I attended back when everything was shut down, the uh JC building was was listed with, I want to say about a half a million dollars, Jeannie, if that's correct, for the actual remodel of that building. And then there was um up to ten, fifteen, twenty million dollars in over five years for the remodel or update or new main library. So we just need to dust those things off and remind them that these are discussions that were had by previous Measure J and actually were approved. So we're not asking for something that is totally new. We're just asking them to go back to the their their budget and 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 pull it forward. Now, I will tell you, every meeting that I've been to, every discussion, I and I was so relieved, you guys may recall, um, but I went to the, I went to one of their meetings last year. And in that meeting, there the some of the new uh trust, uh some of the new commissioners weren't there yet. But our projects were still there in the top ten. I mean, that nothing had slid. So I don't, I don't, I really don't think, as Jeannie has has been been coaching me, I'm really not, uh, I don't think that we're going to have a hard battle. I think it's just reminding them and and reminding what we want to do. Um, and let them know that we put a lot of work into this so far. So fingers crossed, light a candle, whatever you pray to, pray, um, and let's let's uh be prepared. And I think another thing too we love a community. We have support organizations like the Friends and the Foundation that are chomping at the bit to do this. So this isn't something that we're just, we're going to throw out there. Now, I will tell you, if you know anybody who loves pickleball, those pickleball people are love it. They love pickleball and they are after some money to build some pickleball courts. So they were, they were there front centered. I mean, they had to limit their, I think, the number of people that could talk, right, Jeannie? That was my understanding, because there was a bunch of them wanting to talk. So uh um, I've I've heard that we we've got to be ready for the pickleball people. But uh, there's room for all of us, right? Well, all, I I think there's room for everybody. So at the table, Jeannie, you want to say something?
No, we're not talking about pickleball. That's my other commission.
They were out of my, uh, and I have friends who play pickleball. I know it's very popular. I need to learn this.
It is very popular and they are passionate.
Any questions about the the Measure J or thoughts uh that you'd like to share? Anyone? All right, so let's move on to um Item B, which is uh in your packets. Uh, we have some representation on the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library Handrail Update. Jeannie, are you doing that or Julie?
Um, I'll give you a little introduction and then turn it over to Julie, but um I wanted to to start by saying that this uh, we are not asking you for any money. We're just giving you an update. So Julie, take it away.
Yes. So yes, let me reiterate. Uh, so uh, this is just to give you an update. I know that in the last um few meetings, I had told you that this was in the works and was coming. Um, and so I just wanted to share the progress so far. Um, so again, we were able to utilize um architect of record for the city um to uh draft some plans. And so what you have before you is the one we're pursuing is the single rail in the front. Um, so you know, um, match historically with the building's um style and other features on the building and so on. Um, and the um so you were given the drawings just to show you where, you know, where we're recommending placement. There was discussion about the length of the handle and things like that, so that we we worked through all those things. Um, this information was shared with the HSPV um board um yesterday at their meeting, just as a update, again, informational. Um, and I have not heard that there was any concern or comment that they needed to share, otherwise I would have heard about it today. Um, and so and then the example um that you were shown is as a finish only, again, you know, just um keeping in line with what um is already historically um significant to the building. Um, the next step, just so you know, we'll be going out to get actual pricing. So I have no pricing information. So if you were going to ask me about that, it's not, I have no information for you. Um, but again, this is in our budget for Wellwood, and we're not asking for you to contribute in any way. We just want to keep you informed of what's um the status and what's progressing, how we're moving forward, how things are looking and so on. So it's it's pretty straightforward. But of course, if you have any question that I can try to answer, I'm happy to do that.
So I I I guess my question slash comment, Julie and Jeannie, is how how in the world have we gone this many years without someone asking for a handrail for that building? Really? I'm surprised.
Um, well, uh, you know, I mean, uh, I think it's just um something that just was not, you know, they didn't want to make any changes to the facade or the outside of the building because of the historical significance. That was something that was discussed in the remodel. And um they just did not want to do it with the shallow stairs and adding the accessible entrance in the back. They felt like that would address any of those needs. Uh, but you know, since the reopening, which is now five, six years now, um, you know, there's just been a few incidences that we just felt like it warranted this handrail um, re, you know, addition. So that's why we're doing that now. We've tried some other remedies. Um, but I think this is, this makes the most sense for what we need to do for this building right now.
Chair recognizes Trustee Barbara.
Uh, Julie, uh wheelchair accessibility is through the patio in the back?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Are there any other questions for staff regarding the handrail at the Wellwood Murray Memorial Library? Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Item uh C is the Building Forward Library Infrastructure Grant, and I assume that is you uh in this case.
Yes, I just wanted to keep this on our agenda because um the California State Library um it's, we're waiting for them to release the application. So um they had said uh late January, and now it's turned to early February. So we're still waiting for them to release the application for this grant project. Uh, when it does open, we are going to do our best to get a great and um I'll just remind you, um, the Building Forward Library Infrastructure Grant is a a grant opportunity for California libraries to receive uh matching funds up to ten million dollars for library renovations. So it's the perfect opportunity for us. Perfect. We're we're that's why I'm very happy, like, I'm I'm going to keep the optimism on because uh I want to get this grant. Uh, but we, it does require a match. And um so if we have twenty, if we have twenty million dollars of life safety infrastructure needs, I bet we do and are, you know, and then we can come up with uh we as a city and trust, trust fund and friends and all of us can come together and come up with ten million dollars in a commitment. We, as a city, will apply and and apply for the ten million dollar match because what wouldn't be greater than a a ten million dollar gift for the library?
And the State Library, in my experience, is is they're pretty generous about these things. So we, so Jeannie, why, why couldn't we, we certainly need to include this in our Measure J presentation, because Measure J money, could that not be used to be the match? I mean,
Absolutely. And um it we're required to, our our city is required to apply for the grant. Um, so our city council would have to approve us applying, because if we do get the grant, there's a matching obligation. So we can't just say, sure, we'll 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 match it. And then the city's saying, hold on, we don't know anything about this. So we will definitely follow all the protocols. Um, it is a um financial need-based competitive grant. So uh, the the poorest cities in California are more eligible than richer cities, if you will. And it's um, there's a whole chart and um we're in a, we're at a certain spot in the chart. So hopefully, you know, it won't be so competitive that we don't even qualify.
You know what court, I'm sorry, Ed, my hands up.
Trustee Barbara.
Uh, do you know what quartile we're listed at in that listing?
Um, yes, we are about uh thirty-five percent down in the um, let's say it's called the LIPC. It's, there's a score, the whole chart and out of all of them, we're about thirty-five percent down in uh poverty score. So not horrible if you're competing for a grant.
Right. Okay, yeah. Um, so we certainly want to include this as an opportunity and get some ears perked up at Measure J, because you know, that would be a sure way for them to increase that budget uh with state funding. I I mentioned this in passing to former Mayor Holstich when I saw her at the AIDS Walk and it really got her attention and said, yeah, that's we need to know about that, because uh state funds are always needed, right? So I will, we'll keep our eyes on that. Thank you, Jeannie. So, um, I will, we'll keep our eyes on that. Thank you, Jeannie. Let us know when that application comes out. I guess we're being blessed with a little bit of delay until we get in front of Measure J, right? So we can let them know, we may have an opportunity pop up. Any other questions for Jeannie and the Building Forward Library Infrastructure Grant from the State Library? Okay. Um, our next item is the Finance Investment Ad Hoc Committee Update. Um, and in particular, it's regarding the loan to the foundation. I, I just wanted to add my report to that, and then I'm going to turn it over to Treasurer Jones and to trustee Borba. You may recall, I, when we, we, when we heard about, uh, the restrictions of using, uh, public money for investment. I'm the one who thought, oh, my gosh, if you remember, we gave $100,000 of trust fund to the foundation. And having served on the foundation, uh, that money sat in cash up until just recently, and then they, uh, had developed an investment. Strategy and had invested some money, um, some of their money, uh, and I thought, oh, my gosh, does that apply to them? You know, if we give them money, does that money have the same restrictions? And the last thing we'd want to do is, you know, to, uh, uh, have that money have to be reversed. So, um, I called David Sidley, if he's out there listening, and he'll know, I was in a panic going, how much money is in the, in the checking account, you know? Um, uh, so, and he, and more important, I was, I actually came from it from a different perspective. Is there enough money to cover the loan balance, right? Um, yeah, he's, he's out there and he did a real fast look up and yes, there was. I thought, okay, at least we would have it, you know, cash in there if that happened. The city attorney, uh, I went to the city attorney, I asked him this question. And he came back with a very clear ruling and said, and he actually brought in another expert who said. That, uh, money that we would give to the foundation, uh, is not subject, uh, to that criteria and those rules, so that made it even better. Um, and I shared that with our finance committee because in, in my mind, that, uh, might be an opportunity. For us to use our foundation and some of the strategy for investing funds, uh, because it might give us a little more flexibility. So with that, um, I will consider my, my report back to you all complete. We got a ruling from the city attorney. I'm happy to share with anyone who'd like to see that ruling, um, but then I'll hand it over to, uh, trustee Jones and trustee Borba.
Right, well, I guess we kind of agreed, uh, let me start off here, um, Craig and I actually met on the 25th. And to talk about, uh, all of the investment. Um, and so we're going to begin by contacting agencies that can do investments as long as they comply with the law. Um, I'll let you fill in a little bit there, Craig, too, um, because Craig, um, has talked about the RAP dollars and some investments and some other things there. Uh, they've been using a variety of different, different, uh, people as well. So, um, the city of Palm Springs, their return was only about point oh five to one percent, half of a percent to a percent. Uh, but Chandler Investments just took them over about a year ago, March and April of 21, and the movement, movement of the investments are slow, so the return is not. Uh, very, very high. So, um, the, we know the Friends of the Library are looking at investing with the Community Foundation. Um, Craig mentioned, uh, that we can actually chunk the funds and put some in different locations to see who has the best return. And then move funds around, which really resonates with me as we had a conversation about that. So we're looking at the rates of return. I've got to call out again to a couple of people who used to be in charge of wealth management, one at Wells Fargo and one at Bank of America. Uh, to get to see if they have any recommendations about, uh, individuals, uh, or, or companies that invest funds. Um, in terms of rates and return and the like, so, uh, our timeline, um, really is, I think, very important because we want to meet a certain, certain. Outcome here, uh, we want to be able to select in February, which is the month we're in. Firms that we think could be investing our funds, we want them to make a presentation to us, basically. And the presentations we would ask to make to us in March, so we're going to do the selection of the firms would be in February. Their, um, uh, presentation to us in terms of, of what they do in terms of fund investment and the returns would be in March. With the eye to making a decision in April. And that's so that we would narrow it down to two to three to make the presentations to the board, and then we'd make a decision in May. And, um, and that's kind of it. You want to fill in the rest on that, Craig? I'm losing my voice already again, so.
Okay, I appreciate it. Uh, I made some contact to some of the, uh, nonprofits that I know are investing their endowments. The, uh, Mizell Center, uh, has their money invested with the Community Foundation. And they have not received their Cordler Report, which comes out, uh, which is the December report has not come out yet, but there's. Report, they were receiving over 5% on their investments. The RAP Foundation, uh, only has their money now invested with Wells Fargo. Now, again, I, they're not following the strict restrictions that were under, but, um, the Wells Fargo investment from RAP, uh, this year. Uh, as of December was 3.2%. So both of these organizations are five to six times more than what the city was receiving previously.
Right.
I am sure that, uh, both these organizations would be willing to, uh, to do a presentation for our full board of trustees. The Community Foundation recently gave a, uh, presentation to the Friends of the Library and, uh, which was very nice and very clear. Um, we can do this with us, but know, let them know that we're under those certain restrictions. I'm real happy with the attorney's, uh, information to you, Ed, regarding that we could do. And our investments through the foundation, uh, and that would allow us to do as, uh. Al and I had talked about, about doing chunking, maybe. And the money, tell them what we exactly what we would like them to do with it. Um, and if David and his organization is willing to do that, I think it'll be a big help for our endowment. And be able to allow us to give more money to the library. Uh, I did give, uh, to, uh, Jeannie a copy of the, uh. The policy for investment for the RAP Foundation's very thorough. I think it's four pages, Jeannie. And if, uh, Jeannie, uh, with Ed's permission, if you could send that out to the other trustees, I'd appreciate it. Uh, so that we'd have a copy of what a policy would look like.
Right, right. But I think what we're down to, uh, with your agreement, certainly the Community Foundation and Wells Fargo. Their rates of return are significantly higher than the city of Palm Springs. And maybe in fairness, we asked Chandler Investments to come back as well, uh, since they're with the city. And only limit the presentations from those three. Um, and, and what do you think of that, Craig? I think that makes the most sense.
I, I think that's a great suggestion.
So with, I guess we want to seek the board's approval to put out, uh, a formal request that they make a presentation to us. Uh, in terms of their investment strategy and what they would recommend for us. Uh, based upon what they've been doing for other non, nonprofits in the Coachella Valley, so.
I have a question for both of you. Do you envision these presentations being at this meeting, so it's a, a public presentation first of all? Um, and do you envision giving them like criteria, timeframes that, you know, that they would present and cover certain. You know, topics for us to evaluate? Is that, is that what you're thinking? So maybe you could speak to the, the format that you're thinking about?
Well, certainly, I mean, the presentation would be to us in March. Uh, we were taking this meeting to kind of update you of our conversations. Um, you want to speak to that, Craig?
Yeah, I was thinking, uh, much like they did with the, uh, Friends, a 15 to 20 minute presentation. They can give us everything they need. They can talk to us about two types of funding. One, that they're doing with these organizations now, and also, uh, funding for us under the restrictions of that Senate bill. Uh, so they can give us an idea of whether we want to involve the foundation or we just want to do it ourselves.
And, and one, one final question, and I'll turn, I'll, I'll turn it over to Jeannie. Um, after we go through this, going back to our own foundation and being prescriptive, if we were to give them money. We could be as prescriptive as we want you to invest this money with. I don't know, the Community Foundation or certain group in this way. Um, with, I, I'm assuming that that would be something that we would draw up an agreement with our foundation and, and be very prescriptive on what we want them to do. And how we want to be included in that management, right, or that oversight, maybe management is not the correct word. Um, I, I think that the day is going to come where. It should our success continue, as I think it will, and we're going to do a major capital campaign for a new building. I think that we're going to have to, to be partners, if not the very first, to award the foundation. With that first gift, and they, and all foundations look for that first gift to kick off those campaigns. And I think that that would be where we would be very prescriptive. You, you fill in the blank, you write the check and whatever that might be, but you say this, this is to start and kick off that capital campaign for this new building. And here's how we want, now, by the way, uh, what I don't know is, does our prescription need to be, could it be? Or should it be, or will it be a public document? Um, or will it be something that we would create with, uh, our foundation to do? Am I making, am I making sense about that?
Yeah.
You're, you're on mute, Al.
Sorry, Al, I muted you because you were.
Coffee.
Coffee, thank you very much, Jeannie, for my coffee night. Okay, um, can't, it gets worse as I talk. No, I, 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 I think I envisioned it, and I don't know, Craig, we really didn't discuss this when we talked last week, but I envisioned this as a public presentation. Uh, in March, I don't see any reason why not. Um, but in also in response to something else you were saying, and I'm not sure I inferred it all correctly, but. One of the things I like about chunking, which is, is something that Craig raised when we talked. Is that if we get down to, to a couple or three or whatever else with very interesting, um, investment strategies. You're correct, we tell them what to do and what they can and cannot do. But at the same time, I, I, if, if we can chunk this correctly, you know, I, I would not. Be, I'm really a very conservative investor. First of all, I need to preference that, so, uh, but. Uh, and given my age, I don't take a lot of risks. I mean, I, I turned 74 in three weeks, so you can all wish me a happy birthday later. But, um, I, you know, I'm not going to take a risk with the money at this stage of life, uh, which, you know, could be two years, 10 years, 15, who knows? But with, with this, I think we could, in fact, take a look very carefully. At some investment strategies that may have a little higher rate of return. But with a higher rate of return comes a little higher bit of risk. I, and that's something we have to consider, I think, as we give the instructions to ultimately whomever we pick or several that we pick. Does that make sense, Craig?
Yeah, definitely to me. Well, I like to diversify as much as we can, so protect the money.
Yeah, I just called upon my experience when I was in San Francisco. It wasn't uncommon for the foundation to take money. Um, and with restrictions, number one, um, also to use it for matching. There's no reason why we couldn't say, take this money out now into the community and get people to match. You know, to, to increase that, you know, whatever match you need, um, and never touch the money, really. Um, so, I mean, I think that, I, I think this just kind of opens up, and I'm, I'm, I'm so excited about all the options that we have. So, uh, a chair will recognize, uh, Director Case.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am just thinking about the governmental role on this, so. I, little red flags start to come up in my brain about, is this inviting out firms to come to your meeting? Is that, uh, proper? So I would need to investigate that, just to be sure that you all are doing the right thing. My, my thoughts are that if, if you give money to the foundation, then the foundation gets to decide how they want to invest it. Otherwise, you're, you're kind of skirting the law by telling them what you want to. Uh, it's my opinion, so I, I need to find out about that, if that's, if that's.
I, I don't, I don't.
Or if it's okay.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, and it's your job to have the little red flags, but I, I think that, you know, remember, we've had these conversations. The city was very clear, it's our money, and if we decide, uh, and we can invest it in other ways, they encourage us to shop around and look at other ways to investigate. I think that having those meetings with potential public comment or at least observation. Uh, I'd rather do it now than get down the road and someone say, what do you mean? You, you secretly met with Wells Fargo and you're taking this trust money and you're doing something with it. I think that, you know, having it totally transparent to the community goes a long way towards. Even getting donations towards that. I mean, we might end up seeing that, you know, people want to put support into giving money. But, um, I, I, I never, I didn't hear anyone when you and I were meeting with the city attorney and the city finance director and with. Uh, city manager that said we explore, you know, and. By, in all means, look at the city option, which I think that we promised them we would always do that, so I think we should.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and so I'm just raising. Uh, I want to investigate, um, doesn't mean that it won't, you know, that I, I'm intending to delay your, your meetings or presentations. I've got time to, to ask about that, but.
You muted me again.
No, you're copying it. Just mute yourself when you want to talk.
Um, no, what I was going to say was, um, I, I think you're right to do, to just double check it. My sense is this is not a procurement process, however, uh, the city didn't go through a procurement process. This is really the deal, how do we best invest the money for the best rate of return for what our goals are and what we're trying to achieve. But I think it's fair that you do it. I would urge you to do it sooner than later. Uh, uh, because we would like to line up these, uh, various representatives to come in another four weeks. So, um, I, in, in order to keep to our timeframe and get all of this done before, uh, trustee McBride rotates off.
So.
Yeah, right, who knows, he just may. Be back, you, you may come back after a year.
Well, no, I'll be listening to you guys every day. I'll, I, you know, every time you have this meeting, I'll be out there listening somewhere.
Just as I listen to the airport commission meeting every month as well.
Trustee, uh, Borba.
Yeah, Ed, I don't want to put you on the spot, but a- after your tenure is over, will you still be connected with the foundation?
Well, that's a good question. I, I think as a private citizen, I certainly could ask to be, uh, a member of the foundation or the Friends or. Um, I don't think that they would prohibit me from being on one of those boards if they'll have me, and, you know, I would like to stay involved. But, you know, we have, we have a new, David Sidley said, yes, I will. Um, so, but I, but I think you guys remember, you know, it's, uh, if I. Well, never mind, I won't say anything, but, but yeah, I, I would intend to maybe apply for the foundation board and, and stay involved that way.
Okay.
Being transparent.
Okay, and that would be good for us, or I should say, it'd be good for the library.
Mm-hmm. I guess what I would say to be, to be transparent is, I will, I certainly may consider other city boards or commissions. Um, so, you know, I, I say that if I were to apply for something and they said, oh, we really wouldn't, but prefer you not be a member of a, uh, you know. Another group, then I'd have to take that into consideration, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great report. I, I'm going to open up in this, this, uh, trustee Norgard or our governor, do you have any questions for the committee? And anything you'd like to add or comment or say?
Um, I would just, I just think that if, Jeannie, I totally understand where you're coming, you're saying that maybe this is not the right procedure, I guess. But let's say it isn't, um, what would stop, uh, Dr. Borba or Al from giving us a presentation of what was presented to them? I mean, we could, we could get that information. It doesn't have to be directly from those investment groups, right?
I muted myself again, but yeah, I, I, I think you're right, Monita, very much so. I, I think that's be the case. If, if we found out we couldn't do it one way, that's the other way to do it. We just review it and we come back with a report to the full board.
Uh, trustee Norgard, you, you were going to make a comment.
Um, yeah, I have a question actually about the presentations we've been discussing here. So, uh, to sum up, are you thinking of two or three? I heard Wells Fargo, I heard the Community Foundation. And perhaps Chandler, is that correct?
Yes, I, I think we owe it to, to the city, the city's using Chandler Investments, and I think we need to have a, a more formal discussion with them. They had just assumed it about a year ago, so they, there wasn't much to go on at that. But yeah, I think in fairness, that we. that we consider the city's investment as well. I mean, that's, I, and I think Craig agrees. I'm, I'm like, we kind of talked about that anyway, so, yeah.
And as, as far as you two are aware, there are no other likely options to consider in the
Well, I, I, I put out feelers to a couple of friends, as I say, for wealth management. Who are used to investing large sums of money for clients and the best for the bank. I'm just waiting to hear back any thoughts or suggestions. Right now, they haven't really come up with any that would be particularly. I mean, you can go to any bank, Chase has a, we go to a brokerage firm. I mean, there's any number of, of options. But we want to stay with, I think, those who are working with other five oh one C trees, nonprofits, and looking at the rate of return. Because it is impressive what they've done and why I, I'd like to know why they've done it so successfully.
Sure, sure. Yeah, good, thanks.
I, I guess really, our money is currently sending, sitting with Chandler, right? So Chandler is the company we, we're currently doing business with anyway, so having them do a presentation as the current firm that we do business with would be appropriate, correct?
Yes.
And then trustee trustee governor, I'm sorry, did you, did you have something you wanted to add? Are you okay?
No, no, I'm fine.
Thank you. Anything else, trustee Norgard?
That's it, thanks.
Good report, guys. I think we're, I think we're on I think we're on the right track. And I think it's, uh, we've come a long way. You know, going back to our previous treasurer who kind of punted the seed and got us started, I think we're and I know that he listens every once in a while, so if he's out there, I hope he's smiling that we're, we're making progress, so. Any other comments on this topic before we close this down? So Jeannie will wait to hear from you. And in the meantime, trustee Borba and trustee Jones will prepare to make invitations and start getting this pretty, okay?
Right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Our last agenda item, of course, is reserved for trustee staff comments and any future agenda items, which we, we just kind of just discussed. Are there any? Does anyone have anything they would like to say at this point? Trustee Borba?
Try to push the button and raise my hand at the same time.
That's okay, I saw you raise your hand.
I, I'm assuming, Al, you and I need to have another meeting scheduled soon, so that we can maybe talk to these organizations and see if they're available for a presentation, but we won't set anything up until we hear back from Jeannie.
That's why, again, I reiterate to Jeannie, you need to do that sooner than later, if you would please. Like this week and next week if possible, so it would be, because it just doesn't leave a lot of time. But Craig, yeah, I agree, and, and I'll be over this, whatever it is I have in another couple of days anyway. According to the doctor.
I did actually have one other question for Jeannie on a totally different subject. This takes us back to what you were saying about the current closure. I'm curious to know what metric that the city will use as a threshold to reopen facilities, including the library.
That's a very good question, and there's not like a hard number that like so many cases per hundred thousand or something, but they're watching the trend and they were hopeful that the trend was going to go down and we get a COVID report every week that our our city emergency manager puts together and it's from the county and it should, I'm, it's probably, the information's probably out on our city's COVID page. But what they were hoping for and looking for this week was a decrease, you know, a downward trend, and then the downward trend over a few weeks would be great, and then they said, well, then we would look to reopen. But what happened was the numbers actually doubled from the week before, so there's a giant spike. And I just got an email during this meeting that says we will not be opening next week either, so we were well, next week is the week they were shooting for it to reopen, but we just got the word for sure, we're not opening next week. So they're watching for the trends and the numbers and you know, unfortunate that we're here again in another wave.
Yeah, true. There was a good report today, David in the Desert Sun about what's happening in Riverside County, and it breaks it down, and so it was very interesting reading. Also, two city council members made presentations to Main Street this week, which was on Tuesday morning. Ed, were you on that? Usually tend on Main Street. I, I do too. It's just, it's very confusing right now for us out here, what's going on. Another area, San Francisco, I think is lifting everything. People don't even wear a mask inside, so it just varies from place to place, but they are, every news report now says we're plateauing. Even on the, the morning news this morning, national news, we are plateauing. There's some states that are still spiking, but we are not one of those, but it just generally nationally, it's starting to, to level out and start to decrease. Frankly, it's, it's, it's this herd immunity in my mind, more and more people are getting it. I got it in December in Puerto Vallarta, you know? Who knew? And I think I probably I don't know. Have no idea how I got it. But it was no big thing. That's, I was like a common cold, no fever, no nothing, but and that's generally what's happening. And now with the new issuing, potentially issuing of vaccines for ages under five to six months. That's all good news as well. From my perspective, it is at least.
Unfortunately, my household was hit with it. We tested positive. And I'm so glad that we had vaccinations and boosters made it much more bearable. But, you know, I'm, I'm glad that I experienced that's done, you know, I, I don't want it again, but it's, it's as a business owner, it's, you know, every day we just keep watching it, so. But everyone in the community that comes in our business without a doubt, you know, still supports mask, you know, even volunteer vaccination status sometimes. You know, I, I think as a community, we're lucky that we kept it strict for the time that we did, like on other, and I, and I look back on that and I was kind of, oh, why, you know, everybody else was lifting, LA was going wide open, and we didn't remember, we still had masks inside, and I think that was, that was a smart move. I I'm, I'm proud of our leadership for taking the flak on that. And it, it hurt all of our business and our services, but I think it's going to help as well. You've had, and you've had your hand up, Jeannie, so go for it.
So to answer David Norgard's question about some of the data, the, the weekly report is posted on our city's website, so if you go to the city's website, palm springs ca.gov, at the top, there's a giant banner that says coronavirus information, you click on that link and then there is a page. And you scroll down to COVID nineteen case updates, and then there's the report for January thirty first, and then you it downloads a PDF that's many pages long, and it tells the citywide and the wastewater treatment data. And so very informative. It's a great, great report and yeah, we thought the number was going to go down and it went right back up, so. The city's just, just being cautious and and we're glad, you know, we don't, we don't want to get sick.
Sure.
We don't want to get our community sick. We're having we, when I say a hundred people come to the library, what pre pandemic, a thousand people a day came to libraries. Imagine a thousand people in here every so we're we, we'll hold you at the door with everything you need, just about.
You know, what's, what's, what's perplexing to me, if I had not been in Puerto Vallarta trying to fly home and required by CDC to get a negative test before I could step on the plane, I would never know that I was positive. That's what I think so insidious about this, because it was not in December. Now we know a common cold can be a COVID. But in December, we didn't. And I, you know, I would not have known if I had not gone on my trip that I was even positive. Depending where I picked it up, again, who knows any of that, so. But thankfully, because of the booster and everything else, I've never had any, I've never had a fever. Didn't have, no, I had anything, and by the time they find it, it's already gone, so it's, it's just bizarre. And the biggest irony is, I could have come back into the United States by car or fly to Tijuana and walk over the bridge or come in by boat, and I don't have to show a test at all. Only when you come in on an airplane.
This is ironic.
It is ironic, yeah, and I did consider could I get to Tijuana from Puerto Vallarta, walk across the bridge and get home, and I thought, eh, that's not a good idea. I best play by the rules, so.
Unfortunately, I think this is something we're going to live with for the rest of our lives. I think it's going to be like the flu and every year, you know, I don't think this is going away anytime soon. It's just going to be less, it's going to be more manageable, thank God. Yes, Jeannie?
One more thing, downtown concert starts at seven tonight. I've had it's called Rock the Park in the downtown park and Eagles tribute band tonight, and I just was receiving many, many texts, and it is not windy at the park right now. There was a major concern.
As the department head responsible for the park, are you going?
No. No offense to the Eagles, it's seven o'clock and it's, we're ready to go home, so.
You can blame it on the library commission.
I want you all to go first, first Wednesday of the month, seven to eight thirty tribute bands. It's going to be a great time.
It's a great facility. We were there when it opened and they had the tribute band for ABBA. That was fun. I mean, it was
That was, yeah.
It was great to see everybody around and it was comfortable and, yeah, that's great.
And we're exploring other programming down there too, so.
That'll be good.
Any other closing remarks or anything anybody else would like to say? Okay, I want to You're heading to the park? Good. She's going to rock with the Eagles, so you have, you have fun. I love the Eagles, but I don't know if I can make it to the park tonight. But thank all of you for your time and, and your service to the library. And we'll call the meeting to close in the time I have, at six fifty-three. And we'll see you. Our next meeting will be on March second. Right, right. All right, guys. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, good night.